Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. Are there any public comments? I don't see anybody here. I don't have any speaker slips. I don't see anybody on Zoom. Before we recess, the City Council to close session. Madam City Attorney, can you read what we're going to be discussing?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items on the closed session agenda. The first item is conference of real property negotiators pursuant to government code, Section 54956.8. The property in question is APN 0168-371-09-0000. Agency negotiators, City Manager Duggan and Municipal Utilities and Engineer Director Harris. Negotiating parties Erwin Wetter Partner Palm Run LLC and under negotiation terms of payment and price of possible land purchased by city. Item number two, conference of legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1. Two A is Miller and Associates, Inc. versus City of Redlands San Bernardino Superior Court, case number CIVSB2203755. And two B is Coyote Aviation, Inc. et al. versus City of Redlands et al., San Bernardino Superior Court, case number CIVSB2418252.
Okay, thank you. We stand in recess to close session. We'll see you at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call this City Council meeting to order and reconvene the City Council. An invocation by Councilmember Denise Davis and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. As we gather tonight in service to our community, let us ground ourselves in shared purpose. In times of division, may we lead with listening. In moments of disagreement, may we hold space for dignity. Let our words be thoughtful and our actions rooted in the common good.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. Are there any public comments? I don't see anybody here. I don't have any speaker slips.
Courage, humility, and empathy. May we remember that behind every agenda item is a neighbor, a family, a future. Let our work reflect the best of who we are and the hope of what we can become together. Thank you. And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have our closed session report. Madam City Attorney?
For items one and two A and two B, there was no reportable action. And that ends the closed session report.
Okay. I have next a public comment, Amanda Fry.
Good evening. I am really frustrated and very concerned about a building on my street. Some of you know about it. There's been numerous violations of state law, local law, painting wall, septic tank, and even the, you know, your building department admits it. And the neighbors don't understand. They put an ADU in the front yard even though it's against code. It's, our area has a contract, and the contract at this point has been breached. The contract is allowed according to four or five, I think it's Civic Code 4531B. I'd have to go back and check that, but it does allow such contracts. Neighbors have heard from the contractor that he has friends in the city of Redlands, so he can do whatever he wants. And everybody's like, well, that explains it. I think that perhaps the city attorney might agree that Government Code 53243.4 would classify allowing a contractor to break the law would be an abuse of office or position. Now, that's the only thing that people understand. I don't know, are any of you friends with Manny Gonzalez, Redlands Ironworks? I mean, does he have friends right here? Is this? I mean, this is what, this is what we're facing. And the neighbors are fed up. And, you know, we've tried the nice way. But is that what's going on here? Because that's what the neighborhood now, after hearing that comment, now thinks. So if you're personally not doing it, you might start asking your staff. Because I think you're putting us all at risk. We've just paid out so much for, on, we have a big lawsuit for a safety violation at a train. Two people were killed on Alabama. We've had multiple sexual payouts last week. It's just appalling. I mean, what is going on here? So I don't know what this friends, friends in the city, what does it mean? You're just allowing people to do whatever they want, break the law, it's okay. Dump your septic all in a rock pit that's not allowed? What's going on here? Building code violations, endanger public safety. I think the whole, I think all the citizens are really tired of it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a request to pull consent items H3 and H6.
Move approval for the balance of the calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barich.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes.
Mayor City Attorney was trying to get your attention. Sorry.
That was consent calendar. Item 18 was going to be pulled and continued to the next meeting.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
Everybody get that? Consent item H18 has been pulled?
Yeah, we might want to re-vote. We'll pull 18, continue that to the second of September. And if you could retake your, your action on the balance of the consent calendar minus the H18.
Move approval for the balance of the calendar minus the continue, removal of item H18, which is continue to the next meeting in September.
Same, same first and same second?
Yes.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barich.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Item H3, this is the adoption of ordinance number 2985, amending Title 18 Zone Regulations of the Redlands Municipal Code to make text amendments pertaining to the housing definition, list of permitted and conditional permitted uses, adopt development standards for low-barrier navigation centers, adopt development standards for farmworker and agricultural worker housing, adopt development standards for single-room occupancy facilities, and add Chapter 17012 for urban lot splits to Title 17 of the Redlands Municipal Code, add article, what is that? 16 to Chapter 18, 1.156 for the two, for two-unit development projects on residential parcels and other various text amendments to the Zone Regulations for implementation of the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element Workforce Program Development Services, Desatnick.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is the second reading of the ordinance and, and amendments to specific plans. That was before the council at the last meeting. It was, as you recall, was a lengthy, detailed presentation. I'm not going to go through it again here, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the council or the, or the members of the public.
Are there any questions from the council for the Director Desatnick? I do have one speaker slip, Andy Hoder.
Good evening, Andy Hoder, to the council and members of staff. Just a short comment. As alluded to, this is a second reading, and apparently I missed a tiny detail on the first reading that I thought merited some attention this time. It's always been my contention that an agenda should be not only an outline for the conduct of a business meeting, but also an opportunity for our elected officials to communicate with their constituents. Having said that, I would hope that the agenda be worded in a way that the average citizen could read it and get a reasonable interpretation as to what that item is about. Again, as already mentioned, housing definitions are part of this agenda item. And within that, there's one tiny detail that I was baffled by, if I can admit that. And I was hoping for some enlightenment here for not only myself, but the benefit of anyone else who might be listening. More specifically, it says make text amendments pertaining to housing definitions and adopt development standards for low-barrier navigation centers. I read through the agenda twice, and I couldn't find any explanation or a definition of what a low-barrier navigation center is. I had a vision in my mind of airplanes flying under bridges, low-barrier navigation. So I don't know what it means, and I just wanted to draw attention to that. It could have been worded perhaps in a way that would be enlightening to everyone and not just those who crafted the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I think that question was asked by, by myself to Director Desatnick. And so if you could answer that question about what is a low navigation center, barrier center?
Yeah, we did not define it in our ordinance because it's defined in state law, and it often they change the definitions. And so rather than put it, the definitions in, we referred to the definition in state law. It refers to housing that provides transitional assistance to help people get from transitional housing into, into normal unassisted housing arrangements. So it's a, it's a type of housing that provides assistance to the residents within the housing complex, but it's not meant to be a permanent situation for the residents.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council? Oh, I'm, on this item?
Yes.
At the end, can you please fill out a speaker slip?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. The code I wanted to cite before was California Civil Code 4751B that validates our, our rules of restriction. And this applies to what's this ordinance that you're trying to pass? Because as I read it, you're, you're trying to pass a law that breaches and impairs obligations of our contract at Hilltop Estates, 3311. And in the California Constitution and the U.S. Constitution, I'm going to cite the Californian Constitution, Article 1, Section 9 says that you cannot pass a law that impairs obligation of contracts. Okay, so I think there's a real problem here on some of the wording on this ordinance. And of course, you all took an oath. I don't know if you remember, but it's in the Constitution, section, let's see, Article 10, section, oh, 20, Section 3, that you're going to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the California Constitution. So I think you've got some real problems in your wording and what's been written, because I know it violates our contract and impairs our contract by what's written. And so I think you shouldn't vote on this. I think you need to really go back and look at it seriously. I find, I'm with Mr. Hoder, it's very confusing to read and trying to understand, because I went through that, and it's like, gosh, this is ridiculous. It's just a munch of mumble jumble thrown into some code. I don't really believe this is the way that it should be done. And I don't think it's fair to citizens. I don't know. Did you guys actually read it? I'm just really curious. Did you actually read it? Did you go through and try to understand? And, I mean, it was a lot of redlining and crossing out and putting in a lot of words. And I, I agree. It, I think there's real problems with the way these ordinances are being amended. And I think that it could be a lot cleaner. So I'd ask you not to vote on it. Table and send it back to your legal counsel and have it cleaned up. Thank you.
Okay. What's the wish of the council? I was going to ask.
I can try. I, I believe from previous correspondences, what Ms. Fry is referring to is Civil Code 45, 4751, which it deals, it has to do with accessory dwelling units. And there, she lives in an association that prohibits accessory dwelling units. And state law, actually, the code she just referred to specifically prohibits HOAs from, from, from not allowing, prohibiting ADUs from being developed. And so what we, so our code is consistent with state law and does allow it. And I believe that's what she was referring to.
No, you may not. You've already, you've already, you've already had. You, thank you.
Well, basically, I'm questioning, this was to the city attorney. Brian answered his part of it. Do you feel comfortable with this ordinance legally?
Yes. I have reviewed it. I've actually reviewed the response to Ms. Fry about the ADUs and state law and concur with, with the statement that Mr. Desatnick has stated to you.
Actually, I, I did read it, and it is kind of confusing, but I'm not an attorney. So I'm.
I did, I did read the ordinance in its entirety, yes.
Yeah, I think the state is going through a lot of the codes and revising them to the degree that they're, they're removing any prohibitions from any, regarding development.
Do we have a time element here that we couldn't necessarily table this to our, of course, our next meeting is not until September. That's the only thing. Do we have a time limit, Brian, on, we need to pass this?
I, I think we've already passed it. It's just the second reading.
Okay.
Yeah, so we passed this at our last city council meeting.
You know, counsel, counsel, the, the issue with the HOA and somebody who may be in violation and the way that the state law works, those are civil issues between private people. And so we're, what we're doing here is trying to conform our zoning ordinance to what the state is telling us we have to conform our ordinance to. That's what we're trying to do here. These issues within HOA and the CCNRs and who may be in violation are civil issues that are beyond our scope.
So having heard that explanation, I move to adopt ordinance number 2985.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barich.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes. Moving on to the next item, H6, which is adopt resolution number 8709 for street vacation number 198, a request to vacate excess public right-of-way totaling amount of 6,850 square feet in an area unimproved and not in use for any public or, or roadway purposes. The subject portion of the right-of-way is located on the west side of Wabash Avenue, approximately 110 feet, northerly east of Sunset Drive North, at budding assessors This proposal is exempt from the environmental review pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Development Services Director Desatnick.
Mayor and council, I'm told by the city clerk that the individual pulled the item to speak on it. Amanda Fry has just left the chambers. So if there's anybody else that wants to speak on it, that's, that's fine. But I think Ms. Fry is the one who requested to speak on this item.
Yes, I do have a speaker slip, so while I was reading, I didn't see it. Thank you for that. So then, how do we proceed? Would we just vote on this item?
You know, I would just make sure no one else wants to speak on it. If not, you can just take your vote.
Thank you. Does anybody in the audience?
Okay.
I have some questions, since it's right up the street from where I live. Is there, right here, we have aerial map or something?
We did a conflict check, and you are outside the 1,000-foot radius on this one.
Okay, all right.
Is anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Is anybody on Zoom that would like to speak to this item? Mr. Moderator? No? Then we'll take him.
No, Mr. Moderator.
Move that City Council determine that adoption of resolution number 8709 is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the state's guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, and I move to adopt resolution number 8709 and approve street vacation number 198.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barich.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes. Moving on to item I1, City Council Ad-Hoc Committee Report and Recommendations relating to City Commissions, Boards, and Committees and Possible Direction to Staff Regarding Proposed Changes to the City Commission, Boards, and Committees, Mayor Protem Shaw and, and Mayor Council, Mayor, or Councilmember Barich.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this was a, something that we did back in April. We formed an ad hoc committee with Councilmember Barich and I. We reached out to all of the chairs for city commissions, boards, committees, et cetera, and spoke with them about the construct of the commissions, how frequently they meet, their size, their scope, what the charter says versus what's actually occurring to determine that, that we're on track. Some of these, the resolutions that created these are in upwards of 20 years old. So we just wanted to try to make sure that we were doing this in the most efficient manner possible. And so what is in the staff report is essentially a summary of what everybody relayed to either Councilmember Barich or to myself when they, when we spoke to them. So kind of from the high-level overview, most, well, moving forward, what we'd like to ensure is that all of the commissions, and when I say commissions, collectively referring to boards, committees, commissions, that they all use a consent agenda similar to how we do on the council to keep their meetings moving along, that they all use a standard meeting template, which will be approved by the city attorney and that will be used as those are created. Some had term limits, some were silent on term limits. So having a standard term limit, which is two four-year terms, the option for terms after that would be a four-fifths vote of the city council, with the exception of the library board, measure T oversight, and the utility advisory commission, those run under some separate rules, specifically like the library board. They are governed by the educational code, so there aren't changes that we can make there. So as you look through the summary, you see that, for example, that one's a little bit different. We do have some student commissioner positions, and as it stands now, those are open to high school juniors to apply. And our understanding is, is that really limits the amount of people that are, are able to apply. And so opening that up to include high school sophomores and juniors to create a little bit more opportunity there, we think would be applicable for those commissions that do have the, the student commission. The, so you'll see, again, I'm not going to read through every single one of those. We do need to have a, a discussion about the citrus preservation commission. Theirs is a charter that there's a little bit of a desire on behalf of the commission to go a different direction. There are some concerns from the city side on that, and so I'll, I'll come back to that in just a moment. I will note that the disaster council, we did not do anything on that one because the fire department is kind of reworking that right now. And so that may be one that we revisit once that is done. Most commissions and boards will go to a quarterly schedule. However, our, our intent is to ensure that we don't cause any type of an increased delay for people that are trying to get a project heard. So for example, Historic and Scenic, we're going to leave them on a monthly. However, if they have no agenda items, then those will be adjourned. The other one that had a bit of a concern was traffic and parking. The intent would be to go to quarterly with traffic and parking. However, if, if an item comes up that needs to be dealt with, by all means, we'll just schedule a meeting for that. We've been told that that's not a problem to do that. We do think that by going to quarterly meetings will actually increase people wanting to be involved, because they won't have to be here for a meeting every month or, you know, every other month. So that's the hope, is that we'll be able to also increase the number of participants that, that we have that are interested in serving and to be more respectful of their time as well. So, you know, kind of the whole host of, of things that we dealt with. There is one note that isn't, we went back and forth on. So the Street Tree Committee was created originally as a subset of the Parks Commission, when it was called the Parks Commission. It is the only, if you notice, it is the only committee that we have, and committees usually serve commissions. And so in order to clean that up, the Street Tree Committee right now is actually a standalone committee. So with that, they should actually be the Street Tree Commission, because they are their own body. Now, they don't fall under Parks or what is now Parks and Rec. So that is one piece that is not noted in this staff report. But in talking to staff, it sounds like we can clean that up if we'd like to make it consistent with the naming of all of the others. So is there any question on that before I talk about citrus real quick?
Go ahead and, and talk about citrus, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay, no problem. So on citrus, the way that the, the citrus currently reads is the citrus preservation commission is charged with preserving city-owned citrus. And when that was created many years ago, the city was basically, there was, there were some, some individuals that came forward that became on that committee. They had some farming experience, commercial farming, and they kind of helped guide whoever it was that was doing our citrus farming before we brought a lot of that in-house, which we do have now. So now there is some, some ask from that committee to start dealing with saving private citrus groves, encouraging people to, because it is a citrus preservation commission, and keeping private individuals, trying to give them resources to help save some of these citrus groves. And I, and I think that unanimously on this council, we would say that absolutely we want to keep those citrus groves. However, there is a, a bit of an issue from, in talking to the city, with trying to use city resources and city staff to try to assist private individuals in the either salvaging of their grove or providing maintenance information. We do have the Farm Bureau, the County Farm Bureau has a resource for that. So they, they do have some of that ability. But if this commission wanted to, I'm sorry, if this council wants to change the scope of that commission, that would, that would require some legal determination as to how far we can go with that. And so I think that's just a, I just throw that out there to say, is, is that something that we want to try to do, is to get involved on that private side? Or should we keep things that the way that they are right now, which is really focusing on the city-owned, the 200 acres of city-owned groves? And what we do as far as replanting, evaluating packouts, you know, trees, working with our, whether it's glass or whether it's Jacinto or whoever's doing the farming piece? Do we want to keep that as is or, or look to expand that role? That is really the question, the question for this council.
So my input would be really to focus in on city groves, although we did have an issue or instance where quarantine affected private groves. And so, I mean, there is, there are one instance where we needed to really convey, and you went under the, the state agricultural body. But I think I would, I would feel more comfortable with just having oversight over our local or our city-owned groves. That would be just my, my input.
I agree. I mean, it's, if someone's personal property, you know, unless they violate something, they, we have enough, we have enough of our grows, what, over 200 acres and stuff, we have to watch out for ourselves instead of looking over somebody else's. I mean, people that have grows have, at least historically, have been very responsible on make sure they keep them up and things like that. So I think we're busy enough just to concentrate on our, our grows. City?
Yeah, I agree with that. And I, I want to thank you both for your work on this. This, I think, has been long overdue, so thank you for taking the time to review this so thoroughly, and, and I hope you're right. I hope this is a retention tool for our volunteers going forward, so thank you very much.
Any other comments before I go to public comment?
No, I'll circle back after the public comment, because I'll kind of explain what the next process, the next step is.
Thank you. I have a speaker slip for Patrick Roskam. Thank you. I have a, a speaker slip for Patrick Roskam.
Good evening. This is weird for me. I'm used to being in front of a computer, not in front of people talking. Good evening, councilmembers, chiefs and staff. My name is Patrick Roskam. I'm the current vice president and of the Board of Directors for the Redlands Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to comment towards this proposed changes to commissions, boards, and committees. The chamber supports reducing the number of commissioners, uh, serving to five on any commission for consistency and aligned with best practices in other cities. This could help streamline discussion, um, and approved, improved efficiency. However, we respectfully oppose reducing the meeting, meeting frequency of certain commissions. While we understand the intent to simplify operations, we're concerned, concerned about the lack of clear criteria for what qualifies an item to appear on a future agenda. Is it one item? Is it two items? Is it three? What kind of items will be, um, deemed substantial? And what will be enough for a meeting to be called? Is it the staff that calls a meeting? Is it a commission's chair? What are those clear directions that, uh, we can do to get items on an agenda if we need to or to convey that? Commissions play a vital role in connecting city hall to the community, offering timely expertise and review on issues that often impact both the quality of life and the business environment. Cutting meetings to just three or four times a year without transparent, objective standards, uh, risks creating bottlenecks, limiting access, and delaying meaningful progress. The recommendations in the agenda item also don't specify if a quarterly means three or four times a year. I'd assume it's four times a year, four quarters. But it wasn't, wasn't clearly stated in that or in a way that made that apparent. We don't think that anybody here wants to erode the confidence in the process, discourage participation from both applicants and residents, um, or delay the process, the progress on any issues that require input from these desire, uh, these advisory bodies. A real-life example of this that we've experienced in the past is that, um, the chamber has brought forward things before that took, uh, five appearances over eight months at the Traffic and Parking Commission to secure crosswalk improvements that we were able to secure. Because they currently only meet every other month, that's what caused such, such significant time. We urge the council to maintain the current meeting frequencies, particularly for commissions like Traffic and Parking, or at least postpone a vote until clear guidelines are provided on how the agenda items will be evaluated and, um, by whom. One suggestion we would offer, instead of going quarterly, maybe bimonthly. That's really it. Thank you for your continued commitment to transparency and put in partnership with the business community.
Thank you. So in response to that, I, I, that's some good feedback there and, and kind of where I was going to go with this after the comment is, our next steps going from here on, and the reason we wanted to get this heard tonight because we have the break coming up, is to allow city staff the time to go through and, um, draft new, um, charters, if you will, resolutions to, to implement these changes. And with that, I do think that it's important that we create a procedure to, uh, address how those things get placed on, how, how those agendas get created, whether it's staff, whether it's a combination of staff and the chair of that, uh, border commission. I think to have that laid out is probably a, a wise, um, a wise thing to do. So, uh, what, what I would ask is that as a part of this, if we approve this tonight, that that is what comes back to us in September, uh, when we look to vote on this. We'll see those new charters, uh, and we will see a procedural piece to say this is, um, this is how agendas will go in addition to the things that we already, that we already spoke to here. Yeah, and that, like I said, that is the next step for us is, uh, I think we, would we do a motion on this one to approve where we are here? And then that starts the process to allow for, is that, is that the cleanest way to do that? Okay, so any other comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you for that. Um, I see we have a couple of callers on Zoom. Are they for this item, Mr. Moderator? Nope, they don't have their hands. Okay, thank you.
There are no hands.
Thank you.
There are no hands. You know, I, I want to remind that as any city council member, we can request a special meeting if needed, right?
Yeah.
So we always have that option. So if the Chamber of Commerce thinks that we need to meet on something that's very, very important, come to one of us and we can discuss it and we can always bring it up.
And you're referring to, even like if we, if they felt that we were delinquent in a traffic and parking commission meeting, we could make the request that we get a traffic and parking commission meeting scheduled. I don't know that we have the ability to do that.
So, um, if, if the council wants to hold a, a closed session, it would take either the, the mayor or three councilmembers to call a special meeting. So three members or the mayor can call a special meeting and we would poll and make sure we had a quorum. And the same rule would apply for each commission. The chair or three members could call a special meeting if, if it was necessary. And just so long as a quorum was, um, we had solidified the quorum to show up, then they could hold a special meeting anytime, and it could be for as, as minimum of one item or 10 items. Uh, it doesn't matter how many items, as long as one item is, needs to have a, have a decision be made, that shouldn't be a problem.
Time-sensitive.
That's correct.
And that is the intent to not delay. So if, if there is something, for example, of traffic and parking meets, uh, on a, one week and the following week a pressing item comes up, it's not to wait a full quarter to hear that, then we would schedule a special meeting so that it could be dealt with.
Exactly. So I want to make sure the public knows that we have that option to be able to do that, so.
So the law wouldn't have.
And we can, and if, if quarterly seems to be too strung out, for example, for traffic and parking, we can readjust that. Uh, let's, we would evaluate that and say, you know what, this, we keep, we're having to call special meetings, or this isn't working, we're delaying things, then we can certainly easily change that meeting schedule.
So the special meetings would be called by each commission and, um, usually the chair working with the staff liaison, they would, um, you know, staff would say to the chair, we have this, you know, urgent item, can you call a special meeting? We'll make sure there's a, a quorum, and then it can be scheduled very easily.
We would start by modeling it after what the council currently follows and seeing if it meets the needs of each of these commissions. If for some reason it doesn't, we would look at adjusting, but, uh, the idea is for consistency, so we'd try to, uh, keep it as consistent also with the council as a body, just so the same rules are easily, uh, understood by all of us.
And, um, obviously this will come back in September, so the thought is that these change to the meeting schedule would occur at the beginning of 2026. Then nothing would start until then. Relative to commission size, there are some vacancies out there now. So, um, we would not fill those so that we don't have to try to, you know, remove somebody, for example. But any other vacancy or any other, um, reductions would just come through attrition. Uh, we wouldn't, we're not going to displace anybody from a commission at this point. It would just happen through attrition. So that's, that's my piece on this. If there's no other questions, then.
Okay. What's the wish of the council?
I move the city, uh, direct staff to work with an ad hoc committee to finalize the changes in the council's city, city commissions, boards, and committees as recommended by the city council. Prepare amendment to the Redlands Municipal Code to incorporate those changes for consideration by the city council at a regular meeting in September.
Second.
We have a motion or a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric?
Yes.
Councilmember Taheda?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Saccido?
Yes. Moving on to Item I-2, this is a discussion of possible action, a possible direction to staff relating to the selection of a lead labor negotiator for the up-and-coming labor contract negotiations with the city. Uh, city's bargaining units, including the possible formation of and appointments to an ad hoc committee of the city council to interview and make recommendations of a lead labor negotiator to the full council. Assistant City Manager McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As you just said, the MOUs with our, uh, the city's nine bargaining units are set to expire next year on June 30th. So as we prepare for those upcoming contract negotiations for the successor contract, an important step is to select a labor negotiator or lead labor negotiator to represent, to represent the city in the process. Staff is recommending that we do utilize an outside, um, labor negotiator and simply due to their expertise, um, in the labor relations, in the labor law, as well as just contract bargaining because it can be a very complex process. And certainly it's always helpful to have that guidance to staff and to the city council. Um, you may recall in 2022, we did utilize the services of Ms. Laura Colty of Leibert Cassidy Whitmore. Uh, she served as our lead negotiator. Uh, if the council wishes and desires, uh, Ms. Colty is available to serve the city once again. However, should the council decide to explore other representation as an option in the staff report, that's before you, uh, the city may form an ad hoc committee of the city council and appoint two councilmembers, um, primarily tasked to interview, um, maybe up to three, uh, um, labor negotiators and come back with a recommendation to the full council in September. Um, the, forming an ad hoc committee is something that, um, can be done and is, is not uncommon to, uh, create that ad hoc committee for that purpose. It would not be subject to the Brown Act, um, as it's limited in scope and duration. Uh, once the committee, um, the committee would actually all automatically dissolve once the council reviews, uh, their work and the matter's finalized. So with that said, um, the options are before you, and I am here to answer any questions, um, that you may have, and that concludes my report.
Okay, um, before we go to our deliberations, we have a public comment. Mr. Steve Rogers?
Honorable Mayor Saccido, uh, Redlands City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. So I got here late, so I, this is the first item I've been, uh, able to make comment on. But I'm really concerned about this item. I would, and, 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 and I'll put it into, uh, perspective for me that, you know, I've been coming in here and saying that the, uh, 2016 MOU used to include the, uh, code of, uh, code of ethics or code of conduct, I should say, for the, for the employees. And I really think that that's a super important thing, and we're starting to see a lot of the, the fallout from not having a code of, of conduct. And I sent over an article, uh, which I said was one of my public comments about all the, all the lawsuits that the city's getting based, uh, or on, uh, the police department and sexual misconduct and all that. And, uh, all I can say is that the police department isn't the only place that these kinds of things happen. And number two, the, I, if, we're talking about professional negotiators here, I would think that one of the most important things would be ethics and, 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 uh, code of conduct. And so I object to this person who previously approved the MOU without a code of conduct. And I encourage you to have the personnel director be your, uh, labor negotiator. And I really believe that there's a, uh, conflict of interest in the, in the, uh, either having an outside firm because there, that takes away the accountability. I wanted this organization to start being accountable to the people, and it's got to start here. You can't just say, oh, well, they, they negotiated it. We didn't have any control. That's the way this city is being run right now, and it's got to stop. So I encourage you to have the personnel director be your labor negotiator, similar to what the county does. And, uh, everything should work fine because that way it's a family. And, you know, we on the outside, we only get, uh, what we need when the family works well together. When the family doesn't work well together and needs outside help and then can point the finger at the other people saying, oh, no, it was them, it wasn't us. You know, you people need a co, a code of con, conduct. The police department needs a code of conduct. All the employees need a code of conduct, and it includes the city council. Thank you.
What's the wish of the council? Was, any deliberation, comments, questions?
I don't know. I, I do have a little bit of reservations about the one we had last year, last year. Of course, if you were the city council, we had, I had somewhat heated exchange between myself and an attorney. I'm not sure if I would really want to use, retain the same, uh, lawyer that we had last time. If there's other options, I would like to look at that. And, you know, I've also heard from some of the negotiating groups and stuff, and I want to go into this. I think we have a great relation right now with the, with the, with the groups right now, and I would like to go into it. You know, amicable, you know, here, we're here to shake your hands. You, you're, we're part of a team, we're part of a, a, a family. Let's, this is what we could do to, um, make, make life better for, for our employees in the city of Redlands. So I'd like to, I, I would be in, in favor of option two.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, I actually asked to put this item on the agenda because I, I see contract negotiations as a great opportunity to build goodwill with our employees. And I also thought that having a third-party negotiator last time, um, really served as a barrier, not only to efficiency, but, but more importantly to building that goodwill. And so I'm certainly in favor of option two at this point and would be willing to serve on that ad hoc committee.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was, obviously was not here for the last set. But sometimes it's, it's, you know, good to at least go out there and, and see what's available as far as who those, who those people could be. It could lead that, um, clearly with all of the bargaining units, um, having new contracts coming up, that's a heavy lift. And I'm happy to, if, if you need another body to do the, uh, the ad hoc committee to, uh, interview those folks and make recommendations, I'm happy to do that as well.
Member Taheda?
Yes, well, as the council member who encouraged us to get a labor negotiator, uh, it was clearly only for the purpose of, of correcting the experience that we had previously where we had language that was not clear and concise and legally binding, that we had those issues. So that, to me, was resolved with the last, with the last, uh, negotiations. I'm happy to support option two, um, to demonstrate to our bargaining units who have, um, expressed dissatisfaction with that last, uh, experience.
And my only comment is I came in amid negotiations and there were, uh, some frustrations with some timelines and meeting opportunities that were missed on, on both sides, and so there was some frustration there, so. But I do see the benefits. Sometimes it had it been a, a better experience of going somebody that we've already had experience with, uh, institutional knowledge with some of the groups already, knowing some of the, um, integral, uh, challenges and relationships. And I believe, uh, I'm not sure, um, City Manager, are we going to have a salary and comp study, uh, completed by, by, um, time for negotiations?
Uh, certainly, uh, right now our schedule is to have that, I think, no later than the end of November.
Okay, and, and when will we start negotiations and will be with all nine bargaining units all at, all at one time?
Uh, well, we have nine contracts that expire at the end of this coming, the, end of this fiscal year. So, um, it, it really depends on how soon we get the negotiating team in place. We could start some initial talks, uh, before, uh, the end of this calendar year. I mean, uh, some things can get ironed out before then, but, uh, typically in my experience, you're looking at March, April, and May being crunch time for everybody, and, uh, it's, it's rare to get a lot of agreement before then.
Okay.
I have a question. Would that, would that being the case is, would we consider costing or the cost of this entire experience? Does the cost begin when we secure the labor negotiator? Or does it begin as soon as we start, you know, having that discussion with the, um, our partners?
Uh, well, they charge hourly rates, and so if they're to meet with our negotiating team and meet with the council, get direction from the council, which they have to have, and they had complete direction from the council last time, they, uh, we would incur charges whenever that is happening.
Okay, thanks.
So whatever the wish of the council, whether, uh, option one or two, what would be the timelines or what would be the time to have a negotiator in place?
Uh, really is, we'd like to get it in place as soon as possible. I mean, we have nine contracts, uh, to discuss. We, uh, in some of my discussions with staff, uh, it, it might be possible for a few groups, to not need to use the outside negotiator because they're very small groups. And, um, it's pretty clear-cut where we have, uh, some bargaining units that are quite large and there are a lot of details going into, there's a lot of different jobs within their bargaining unit, so there's a lot of different details. So, I mean, ideally, if, if you were to do an ad hoc committee, we would start working with them pretty soon on trying to get this settled, uh, to try to come back as early in the fall as possible to get the whole council. as possible to get the whole council to select someone.
Mark and Denise, are you guys going to work on it right away?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to make a motion, if I may?
Absolutely.
I move to approve the formation of an ad hoc committee of the city council for the purposes of interviewing and making recommendations, the full council to lead labor negotiation, represent the city in an upcoming contract negotiation with city bargaining units, and I further move that Mayor Protem Shaw and council member Denise Davis to the ad hoc committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Oh, okay.
I did.
All right. Councilmember Berich?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Soseto?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to a public hearing, item J1, public hearing to consider resolution 8707, delinquent municipal services account report. I declare this an open public hearing. Resolution number 8707 will approve a delinquent municipal services account report and submission of the report to the auditor controller of San Bernardino County for lean processing, management services, and finance director Garcia.
Thank you and good evening, mayor, members of the council. Resolution 8707 is for the approval of the list of delinquent municipal accounts and the subsequent reporting to the county's auditor controller for special assessment for the 2526 tax roll. These accounts are with no water service connection from the city. Included in the staff report, which was printed last week, there is a list of 29 delinquent accounts owing roughly $25,750. Staff are pleased to report that in the time between the agenda's print date and tonight, 13 of those accounts have paid their delinquent amounts totaling roughly $11,480. As of today, there are still 16 accounts owing roughly $14,270. Customers have until August 4th for the city to receive their payments before these delinquent amounts are placed on the county's tax roll. Approval of this resolution will provide authorization to the county to add these assessments to the tax roll should the account holders not comply with the request for payments. And that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, staff is available.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
If there are none, I'll move to adopt resolution number 8707.
Just a minute, we still have--
Oh, it's a public hearing, that's right.
So I call on the city clerk for any comments or questions or testimony received from members of the public?
I did not receive any written comments.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
Try that again. I move to adopt resolution number 8707.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Berich?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Soseto?
Yes. Moving on to item, agenda item K1, consideration of a recycle water supply agreement with Southern California Edison and determination that the approval of the agreement is exempt from the environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, Municipal Utilities Engineering Director Harris.
Thank you, mayor and council. The original agreement between the city and SCE to supply recycled water that's produced from our wastewater treatment plant is a little more than 20 years old now, and it coincided with the construction of that facility. So a lot of that language that detailed the obligations from both parties no longer applies. The old agreement required SCE to either take 3,000 acre feet of water or pay for it, whether they took it or not, and they typically used less than half of that. So that's one of the big changes in this agreement. They've asked to reduce that take-or-pay volume by half. 1,500 acre feet would be the new take-or-pay agreement. I see that as a benefit for the city because for the last 20 years, we've had to sort of hold on to a reserve 3,000 acre feet in case SCE called for that. We have about 75 or 80 recycled water customers right now that actively receive recycled water within the Donut Hole area, but we also have a waiting list about the same size, about 75 or 80 people would like to receive recycled water that we have not been able to provide that service for. We would now be able to do that. The agreement removes some of the language that's no longer applicable. Like I mentioned, it's a 20-year agreement, has modern, sort of, I would call it modern contract language. There's off-ramps now for both parties, whereas before, SCE was the only party that could get out of the contract. Both parties can extend. Updates the terms to comport with regulations and laws that exist today. It simplifies the water, recycled water unit pricing. It was a relatively complex pricing scheme before. If we didn't, were not able to supply water, perhaps the wastewater plant was down for maintenance for a day. That was a deduct. If we didn't supply water that met SCE's water quality standard, that was another deduct, if you will. And so that became very complicated at the end of the year. We're removing the obligation for the city to provide water that meets any water quality standard above Title 22, which is what we're required to produce. Our recycled water has to meet that standard now. We don't intend to change the way we treat the water, so we probably will, in most cases, continue to meet the standard that SCE wants us to meet, but there were occasions that we couldn't meet that standard as well. So the billing becomes very simple. There's a unit price per CCF of water, and SCE pays for 1,500 acre feet of that water a year. If they exceed 1,500 acre feet, they pay that same unit price. There is also a 3.75% annual escalator that goes through the term of the contract. So while the total revenue that the city receives right now, it varies significantly throughout the term of the last contract, but it's typically been between $360,000 and $380,000 a year. The new unit price will generate a little bit more revenue than that for the city, but again, we're only supplying or obligated to supply half as much water. We can then market the other 1,500 acre feet to recycled water customers that wish to receive that water within the Donut Hole area. The escalation table is in the very last page of the staff report. Again, we start off generating about $390,000 in revenue, and then over the 20-year period, you get out to year 20, it's more than $700,000. What that does is starts bringing the SCE rate in line with the rate that all other customers pay within about, I think it's about year 12 or 14. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Are there any questions? I appreciate the extensive labor or the extensive negotiations on this item, and thank you for pointing out on the last page about the amount of revenue that'll be generated. I think that's significant. And also be able to free up some other revenue or other customers for this type of recycled water within our system delivery area. So thank you for all your hard work and your staff for putting this agreement together. With that, I don't see any public comment. What's the wish of the council?
I move the city council to determine the approval of recycle water supply agreement with Southern California Edison exempt from the environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, and I move the city council to approve the recycling waters supply agreement with Southern California Edison.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Berich?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada?
Yes.
Councilmember Soseto? Oh, aye, sorry.
It happens.
Davis, yes.
Councilmember Davis, thank you. I messed up on my, I was swearing at an officer today, too, so, you know, here you go. Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Soseto?
Yes, thank you so much. Item K2, this is a consideration of a non-professional service agreement with Brightview Landscape Services, Inc. for landscape maintenance contractual services within the city parks, medians, and community facilities districts, landscape maintenance districts, and Hillside Memorial Park Cemetery services for a four-year term for an amount not to exceed $2,332,174, and determine that the approval of the agreement is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15301H of the SEQUEL guidelines, Facility and Community Services Director Crocker.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. This item is to approve an agreement with Brightview Landscape Services, and this is for a four-year term to provide services for landscape maintenance within city parks, city medians, the CFD areas, the LND areas, and then Hillside Memorial Park. Staff issued a request for the RFPs and received 13 proposals. Brightview was selected as the most qualified. Sufficient funding for the service is included in the FCS budget, and it incorporates the parks divisions, budget, the tax assessments from the CFD and LND areas, and then the cemetery fund. And I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions from staff?
For staff?
For staff?
Yeah, you said qualified, but you didn't give where they least, where they best in the bidding service.
The bids are when we do the lowest in responsible bidders, but the proposals, these are the ones that are evaluated. They'll submit their proposal. Staff has a team of individuals that evaluate it, and we can actually negotiate those prices. So it's a different process than the bids.
We select the most qualified bidder without any dollar figures, and once we've established who the most qualified is, then we negotiate and compare those prices with other prices that we're familiar with to make sure we're still in a good area, and then we bring it to the council.
Great, thank you.
Who is the current provider? Is it this same group or is somebody else?
So this one's a little bit different this year. So over the past year, same services have always been contracted out, but we've had multiple contractors for different services. This year, with this proposal, we combined these different areas for one agreement, one contractor to perform these services.
So from an efficiency standpoint, when you need something done, you just have to call one person--
One person, yeah.
--as opposed to figuring out which of the, okay, great.
Yeah.
Do they have the personnel to cover that? And I mean, I know they're pretty big, but--
Yeah, they're really big. They're out of Riverside. We held some, yeah, interviews. And just for context, too, is I added up the agreements over the last years. There was really, it was a 1% increase to have this one contractor over all of these agreements, and we feel like it'll be more efficient. There's some additional services, the fertilization, aeration, and pest control, additional pest control, too.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question on this item and maybe future items that come before us. Who does the quality control? Who oversees the quality of services being delivered?
So that's staff. That would be the part, like Parks Division, and then some of management staff as well. This company actually provides quality check services. So they do before and after photos for us every time they perform their services, which we were really excited about. So it's kind of built into this contract.
Okay, good, great. And, you know, in my experience in working with the city, I thought I knew a lot of these areas, but thank you for an extensive, comprehensive staff report on all the different locations of all the different areas that we have responsibility for. Oftentimes, I drive by a landscape district and not sure, is this ours or not, or whose is it? And this is really helpful for me to kind of get an updated or a more comprehensive look at all the different areas where we do have responsibilities for landscape services. So thank you for the report.
There's no other input. I would move that the city council find that approval of a non-professional services agreement, Brightview Landscape Services, Inc. for landscape maintenance is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15301H of the SEQUEL guidelines, and I move that the city council approve the non-professional services agreement with Brightview Landscape Services, Inc.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Berich?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Soseto?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item K3, consideration of an agreement with Meritage Homes of California, Inc. for the Crow's Nest Building at Cojazo Park in the amount not to exceed $800,000, and determine that the approval of the agreement is exempt from the environmental review pursuant to section 15061B3 of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, Facilities and Community Services Department Director Crocker.
Thank you again, mayor, members of the council. Staff is recommending that the city council approve an agreement with Meritage Homes of California for the construction and installation of the Crow's Nest Building at Cojazo Park. The new park, this is the one located at the new Bergamot specific plan area just north of Citrus Valley, and was specifically designed to provide fields for the youth sports, such as this one would be the Junior American Football League that we're catering it to. The youth football program currently shares space with RBY at Martinez Park, and results in program conflicts. The agreement attached will reimburse Meritage Homes in the amount of $800,000 for the Crow's Nest Building and related site improvements. And the funding has already been allocated in the city's capital improvement program and the Parks Development Impact Fee Accounts. Disbursement of those funds will occur upon full completion of this constructed building, and I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Just a comment. Thank you very much for the detailed paperwork on the plans and specifications for the Crow's Nest. We did a public comment, sent to council members. I was concerned about the cost, and I think typically a Crow's Nest is a pole with some sort of, you know, structure on top of the pole and people taking score or keeping score, and this is an actual building. And so that's what the difference is between what the assumed intention was and what we're actually building. Thank you.
We've moved away from the pole system for obvious safety reasons and the ability to also have storage.
So we're going to get rid of the one that's at Community Park, right?
We would, yes.
Okay. That's, yeah, it's kind of dangerous up there. Thank you.
If there aren't any other comments, I have one public comment. Mr. Steve Rogers?
Honorable Mayor Soseto, Redland City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. This, it was a little bit confusing for me to understand this, and I guess it's probably because there are so many parties that, you know, from different departments that are involved in this. And when I say that, I would have expected that, you know, if we had wanted something with our park and it was their responsibility to build this park for us, that we would have gotten this Crow's Nest in the original park plans, and basically, they should be responsible for building it. The way I look at this, especially since it's being done before it's even built, it looks like a gift of public funds to me. This was a condition of approval, this park, and if this Crow's Nest was part of the design of the park, then this developer should have to build it. I don't understand the rest of it, you know, with regard to you having use for your teams, team sports and that kind of thing. I know that's a big part of this. And so all I can say, though, is that this gives the appearance that this developer is getting a freebie. And if it was, if it was known all along that you're going to have these sports things, and this should have been incorporated in the original conditions of approval for that any of these types of improvements would be reimbursable through the park fees and that kind of thing. The other thing is, is that, you know, this is the realm of engineers. You know, we're talking about construction of a Crow's Nest, okay? It's engineering. There are no engineers involved in this. There will never be any engineers involved in this. There are no engineers involved in top of this department. She, well, I'll talk about it in the next item. Now, that should not be under her department because that's a public works contract, and there should be a professional engineer involved in overseeing it. Anyway, thank you.
I can clear up Mr. Rogers' confusion. Originally, the football league was going to go to a different field, and it wasn't until later did we decide that this new complex would be better suited, and so therefore we shifted the Crow's Nest that was intended to be at the other field, an existing field the city already has, over to here. Since the city doesn't currently own these fields, we had to go through these, this sequence, this process. So Meritage would go ahead and build it, and we could accept it later on. So it's nothing the way it was just described.
Here, I also wanted to add, it was, this is exactly one of the questions that I asked prior to the meeting, and the answer was distributed to all council-- prior to the meeting, and the answer was distributed to all council members. I asked, was this building included in the original design? And the city manager was kind enough to explain the response that I was given. So just to make the public aware, I did ask this question prior to.
And the staff report is clear. It says that once it's built, it'll, at some point, it will be dedicated back to the city. So there's no freebie that the developer's getting, getting the money from the city and keeping the property. It's going to be dedicated back to the city.
And I think overall, I think the Junior All American Football was appreciative of the new field that they'll be playing at. I mean, we had them over at Martinez Park, they were playing somewhat, practicing over at Texonia Park, and now I think this is going to be a great opportunity for them to have a legitimate, kind of a stadium or a football field that they'd be able to, and it relieves the pressure over at community at Martinez Park with the double use of baseball and football. So I think this is a great win for Junior All American Football.
It does seem that the reconfiguration of the fields that the Parks and Rec Commission and the Facility and Community Services Department undertook several years ago has really freed up fields, improved the condition of the fields. We did move people around, which change is always difficult, but actually, I think they've found that it has been a benefit to all the different sports, whether it be soccer, baseball, or football.
Yep, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
I move the city council find that agreement between the city of Redlands and Meritage Homes of California, Inc. for the Crow's Nest building at Coiasso Park is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the state SEQA guidelines, and I move that the city council approve an agreement between the city of Redlands and Meritage Homes of California, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $800,000.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes. Moving on to Item K4, consideration of a public works construction contract with Abuud Diamond Construction, Inc. for $527,000 for onsite improvements in preparation for the new Redlands Animal Services Modular Kennel. Approve an additional appropriations of $579,700 and determine that this project is exempt from the environmental review pursuant to Section 15304 of the state guidelines implementing the Environmental Quality Act, Facilities and Community Services Director Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is an approval of a public works contract with Abuud Diamond Construction for onsite improvements necessary for the Animal Services Modular Kennel building and an additional appropriation of $579,700. The city council may recall that the city purchased the modular kennel building last year. It was about July. And it included 24 climate-controlled kennels with indoor and outdoor spaces. This agreement is to prepare the site for the placement of that structure. Staff issued a request for bids on June 23rd and received three with Abuud Diamond Construction as the lowest and most responsible bidder. The $579,700 needed for this agreement will come from $100,000 in donations and the remaining $479,700 from the general fund reserve. Staff is hopeful that completion of the project will be completed by the end of this year, hopefully in November timeline.
Yeah, I did see that, 120-day calendar days, about four months or so.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. Any questions or comments from staff?
Yeah, I think it's, I think my wife's going to really enjoy this, and she volunteers every Saturday down there. She's been bugging me. And also, I like, it's great that Diamond Construction is domiciled in Californ, in California, in Redlands, so it's nice to keep it local, too. So I approve 100% on this.
Okay, before we move on, I have a public comment from Mr. Steven Rogers.
Honorable Mayor Sosito, Redland City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. Okay, this one, basically, you know, I had some observations that I was a little bit concerned about. Again, there are no engineers involved in this, and it's a public works contract. Really, we should have a public work, an engineer should be overseeing the, this contract. And the thing that really disturbs me, first of all, I don't know, did the architect, of course, it was Miller, who I believe is also doing the new city hall, is an architect, I'm wondering if there was a, an estimate, an architect's estimate, engineer's estimate for this work. And the reason I ask that is because this diamond construction came in $200,000 lower than anybody else, and that's a huge red flag. Especially, and I haven't looked at the plans and specs yet, but when you have a contract, and I borrowed this from the book, I'll put it back after the meeting, but this is our contract for a public works project. It's two pages long with signatures. This is antiquated, this is from the 70s. This has nothing that the public needs to be protected, and the city needs to be protected in a contractual situation like this. It's antiquated, needs to be reviewed and updated. And then, I mean, and then, you know, like I said, then when you have that as the basis of everything, and then you have, really, in my opinion, and a lot of other people's, as far as working on a public works contract, and the contract says "public work" contract, that's how bad it is. It's just a public work contract, not public works. Any public works contract is supposed to be overseen by an engineer who knows what they're doing with regard to public works. That's the law. I mean, and I've been coming to this council many years and made this comment numerous times, even before the responsibilities that are now with Ms. Crocker are there. And instead of moving all the engineering together under the city engineer, as it really should be, it's been distributed out to everywhere in staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? What's the wish of the council?
If none, I'd like to move that the city council determine that the project is exempt from environmental review in accordance with Section 15304 of the state's guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. I move to approve a public works construction contract with Abuud Diamond Construction for the onsite improvements in preparation for the much-needed new Animal Services Modular Kennel for an amount of $527,000, and I move to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $579,700.
I'll second that. Motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Absolutely, yes.
And Mayor Sosito.
Yes.
That's right, Mark, your wife-
That concludes our action items, and now we'll go to individual council members' announcements or reports on activities, and I'll start over here.
Thank you, Mayor. For my report, I attended the Fourth of July parade, participated in that, along with yourself. I walked an HOA property that had concerns with city staff and the property manager. I was, I supported the Common Vision Coalition and the Red Hat Program, collecting donations at the Redlands Bowl, and I attended the Parks and Recs Commission meeting.
Just a personal shout-out, we're not here for Fourth of July this year, and we certainly missed the Fourth of July festivities, but my family was in Kentucky, and my stepdaughter graduated from Fort Knox, and super proud of her for that, so she'll be, she's got one more year of school, but then she'll be serving as a second lieutenant in the Army as a nurse. So it was a great reason to miss Fourth of July here in Redlands, so thank you.
Best reason I know.
Congratulations. I hosted a coffee with your council member event over the weekend at Olive Market, a favorite District 1 coffee shop. And yesterday, I attended the Esri User Conference in San Diego, so looking forward to future conversations about the great work that RGIS professionals are doing here for the city and how we can better collaborate. I've been going to this conference for years, and I see other cities showcased onstage, and I'm hoping that the city of Redlands makes our way up there at some point.
I also attended the Fourth of July committee, by the way. These festivities, fantastic. It's really great to have that band and everything going on. Redlands has their stage there. It was really a lot of fun, and the weather was quite cooperative this year. It wasn't as hot as it normally is. And tonight, my wife and I are sponsoring the Bowl program, which is the Navy Band, so I invite everybody to come over to Bowl and enjoy some great entertainment and make sure you put money in the donation.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know to have a great summer. The city council will go dark in August, so there will be no city council meetings in August. We'll see you in September, and be safe and be healthy out there, and be kind. We stand adjourned.